All right. Seven o'clock, July 19th, 2022. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roca? McKeever?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Wireball?
Here.
Potter?
Here.
Sherrick?
Here.
Stegal?
Here.
Young? Okay, before you, you have the minutes of the February 15th, 2022 amended regular council meeting and the July 5th, 2022 regular council meeting.
And on February 15th, on the last page, I put what the change was at the end. So we just changed Chamber of Commerce to County Commissioner. Vicki had pointed that out, and that was an error. So that is corrected now.
I'll make a motion to accept the 352.
Second.
I have a first by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Need July 5th?
I'll make a motion to accept those minutes.
Second.
I have a first by Mr. Potter, a second by Mr. Wireball. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Granting permission for visitors to speak. On the agenda, we have Ms. DeShawn.
Vicki DeShawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, Bussaras. Transparency facts on my suits filed against Bussaras City Councils. The Ohio Sunshine Law states, "Any person may file a court action for an injunction for alleged or threatened violation of the Ohio Open Meetings Act. If the court issues an injunction, the court will order the public body to pay a civil forfeiture of $500. Courts that find a public body has violated the law on repeated occasions have awarded a $500 civil forfeiture for each violation." In 2003, I filed a suit for five violations totaling $2,500 plus $200 cost deposit. Council agreed to settle out of court for $2,700. The city paid $10,423.27 in legal fees. In 2014, I filed a suit for 96 violations totaling $48,000 plus $300 cost deposit. Council agreed to settle out of court for $20,300. The city paid $48,393.37 in legal fees. In 2022, I filed a suit for seven violations totaling $8,500 plus $300 cost deposit. On January 11th, I requested the city provide me with a settlement offer. On February 7th, they submitted an offer for $1,500. On February 8th, I submitted a counteroffer for $2,500 plus $300 cost deposit. Ten weeks later, interim law director Gerner sent an email on April 22 stating, and I quote, "After reviewing your settlement offer with city council, they have decided to agree to the $2,500 plus court costs." In response to Gerner's email, I asked for the date he reviewed my counteroffer with council. His email response was, and I quote, "Bussaras City Council is going into executive session on more than one occasion to discuss the facts and circumstances around the pending litigation, potential settlement offers, and potential resolution. At the April 26 pre-trial, visiting Judge Flanagan asked Gerner when the case would be finalized and an entry filed. Gerner replied, 'In two weeks.' The judge allowed him three." Nine weeks after the pre-trial, the judge scheduled a June 20 judgment entry hearing. Since no entry had been filed by Gerner, the judge asked him what the status of things were. Gerner's response was, and I quote, "He had been off for about a month." I questioned why attorney Steve Friedman, who the city had hired in February to assist Gerner, did not prepare and file the entry. Gerner did not reply. While Gerner was out of the office, I received an email from attorney Steve Friedman stating he would be following up with the city administration to see where things were. Two weeks after receiving no further communication from Friedman, I sent an email requesting the case status. He never responded. To date, the city has paid his legal fees totaling $6,580 with a final invoice yet to be received. At the hearing, I questioned Gerner again on the date he reviewed my counteroffer with council, and they agreed to it. He would not provide the date. Since there were no executive sessions held after I submitted my counteroffer and before Gerner's April 22 email, I told the judge I believe that Gerner had misled the court and I. It is my hope that one or more council members will step forward and publicly admit that no such meeting was held. The following statements, among others, have been expressed and reported through social and/or news media. One, I continue to come to meetings to point out corrections to minutes. The Ohio Open Meetings Act states that a public body must keep accurate minutes of the meeting. The Ohio Supreme Court has held that meeting minutes are inadequate when they contain inaccuracies that are not corrected. I remind everyone that it is inaccurate minutes that will continue to place council in a position to be sued. Second, taxpayers' dollars are being used to pay my settlements. This is true. However, taxpayers' dollars are also being used to pay the wages of the council and its president, who were elected to represent the citizens of Bussaras. As elected officials, you should know, understand, and follow the laws to prevent future suits. The question is, when will you start?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have Alan Frazier.
My name is Al Frazier. I live at 720 Dudley Street. I was told that I'd have five minutes to speak to council tonight. That's not much time, folks. And I know this works like, I know how this works, so I will be attending some committee meetings to follow up on my issues that I'm enumerating tonight. And as I've grown older, I like old sayings, so I'm going to use one. It'll be a recurring theme through the rest of my talk. That old saying is, "The bang for your buck." Okay? So my first issue, the garbage rates going up. This should be tied to the landfill and recycling issues. One question I have for committees is how much communication is there between city council and county commissioners? Or for that matter, Galian Council or Crestline Council? All Crawford County taxpayers who are going to be affected by the landfill recycling issue. I met with commissioners when Sandtech left and Rumke took over. They told me they had nothing to do with the transfer, didn't know anything about it. The transfer was strictly between Sandtech and Rumke. Sandtech took thousands of tons of solid waste, wastewater, solid waste, for $25 a ton, while the taxpayers of Crawford County were paying 20 or $50 a ton. That still goes on today, I believe. That's just one example. How much money did Sandtech make before they left Crawford County? I'd like to know. I was told you have to go through the county auditor's office to find that information. They just leave and hand it over to Rumke. That was the deal. Rumke, one of the largest refuse haulers in the country. No conflict of interest there? Drive out to the landfill. Is there a nice brick-and-mortar lighted sign saying Crawford County landfill? No. But there is one saying Rumke. We've all lived a charmed life when it comes to our trash pickup, so everyone should know that raising our rates is just a Band-Aid on an issue that's going to be affecting the people of Crawford County for a long time. Are we getting the best bang for our buck? Issue two, our access, public access television. I used to watch all the council meetings on our public access channel. I understand that we have a new full-time position of communications director. What is he communicating and to whom? Our current access channel on our cable dial is 1021. How many people know that? And there's never anything on it. There used to be a lot of good on there. Bussaras Redmond, Boys and Girls Sports, graduations, school board meetings, marching band concerts, parades, and more. If Spectrum is still paying the franchise fee, I believe we should have our access channel back. We're paying for it. Are we getting the bang for our buck? Number three, development. Question to committee, what are we developing? Here again, my concern about the communication between our city council and county government. Let's hope the new Crawford County Development Director will work for all the taxpayers of Crawford County. I hope he knows we in Bussaras here have an unused industrial park ready to go. It's behind Walmart. Streets, curbs, water, sewer, all there, just no industry, business, or jobs.
You're at four and a half.
Excuse me?
You're at four and a half.
Correct. I'm just about done, ma'am.
I'm just, you know.
Okay. Jobs that I believe were promised to get the, some of the grant money used. Who made the money on this project? I'd like to know that. Go out to Crossroads Industrial Park. One of the first things you see is an abandoned factory, BPT, abandoned. Go out to the Pines Reservoir. Well, there is no more Pines Reservoir. It's been abandoned. Okay? We're in the process of improving our airport. A good thing. But call the phone number, provide it on the webpage, and see what the answering system says.
You're at five.
I'll just say, it doesn't say Port Bussaras. How may we help you? I'm just about done, ma'am. Allow me another 30 seconds?
30 seconds.
I hope you all are aware that Intel is spending billions of dollars and going to be making thousands of jobs 60 miles from us. Are we working to try to attract some of those dollars and jobs? I hope so. We have the infrastructure and water available. What are we developing, and are we getting the bang for our buck? Several weeks ago, I approached the service director and asked if our street was on the list to be done this year. He said it was, because streets all over town are being done, and our street has been bad for years. He said it was on the list for next year, but he'd see if anything could be done this year. I said, "Fine." Last Thursday, city crews showed up and did this. I'll pass my phone around if you guys want to see it. My street in front of my house. Pass it around, sir. You can scroll. There's five or six pictures there. Okay? I know there's an inconvenience when streets are getting done, but I've never seen a street done like this. Okay? Our neighbor came out and asked me one evening, "Is this a joke?" I'm not laughing. Okay? It's still like this tonight. Okay? So I'll be seeing you at some committee meetings. I just hope that our elected and appointed representatives don't fall into what, to me, is a pattern of conduct of many elected officials nowadays.
Thank you.
Conduct.
Thank you, sir.
Dodging accountability. I got two more sentences, ma'am.
Your 30 seconds was up a minute and a half ago.
Dodging accountability, shirking responsibility, and avoiding any criticism. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Yep. All right. Anybody else?
Sir, I ran over. Do you know how small it makes you people look to give people three or five minutes to speak to you, your constituents? You know how small and petty that makes you look? Mr. Frazier, you're welcome to call me anytime. You're welcome to email me anytime. But we have so many people that come up here and just waste our time, okay? I'm trying not to do that, sir. And I try not to run over. I timed this at home. I timed it at home right at five minutes. I appreciate you coming up, okay?
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Appreciate your time, folks.
Thank you.
Raped it off 210 Ethel Street. Had a quick question, I'm assuming right for our law director, about a abandoned, derelict mobile home in my neighborhood. It's 1201 Reed Street. It's been abandoned for almost 10 years, I believe. It's got the little notice on it that says they have 180 days to bring it up, fix it up, or whatever the heck it says on it, but it was dated like June 16, 2021. So I think it's past the 180 days, and I was wondering where we're at on that, because it does say you failed to appear correct or repair. And it talks about being a first-degree misdemeanor and doing jail time, fines, yada, yada. Where are we at on these things? There's another house down around the corner with the same notice. Are we just sticking these up as Band-Aids and going on about our business?
Do you know who owns that?
Do you really want me to say it?
No.
Yeah, I do. It's right here. Yeah, it's public record. It's on the county website. It's Deborah and Keith Warwick.
So after we post those, we have to serve individual landowners, homeowners to get them to come to court.
Right.
Crawford County has a meth problem right now, so the judge is not going to put property maintenance people in jail. So we're working to try to...
Any way to check this and see where it's at in the system?
I can, absolutely. What's your, I'll talk to you afterwards.
Okay.
But I know 1201 Reed Street is on the list.
Okay.
I'm not sure about the other one that you're referencing.
Yeah, there's one up on West Stone, up by the railroad tracks.
279.
Big, two-story.
Yeah.
I didn't check the paper on it to see what the date was on that one, but I'm sure it's been there for a while, too.
That one's owned by a guy in Texas.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine. I know this one. Like I said, it's got their names right on it. It's not owned by a bank, apparently.
Right.
So I just wanted to check the status and see where it's at. Are we following through with these? Are we just tacking them to houses and walking away?
We're doing. And we're trying to foreclose on some of those properties where we can't find homeowners because they're not paying their real estate taxes. We're mowing the lawn, which incurs the city...
I talked to the neighbor tonight. She said she's getting tired of calling and having the lawn mowed.
Yeah, I believe it.
It's got a garage behind it, too, that's falling down. The front door's wide open. All the windows are broken out. It's hard telling who's coming and going in that place.
Right.
Animals.
It's also not legal, though, for me to back up a pickup truck and move it.
Right.
Which, so I have to go file a foreclosure so that the city can then own the property to tear it down.
Like I said, it's been a year since this was posted on there, so I just, I don't want it falling through the cracks.
Absolutely.
Getting tired of looking at it.
I understand.
Oh, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? All right, moving on. Communications and petitions?
Hey, this letter came from the Tax Incentive Review Council. Dear Clerk, the Crawford County Tax Incentive Review Council recently met to review the tax abatement agreements for your jurisdiction. This review is done in conjunction with the annual report filed March 31, 2022 by the Enterprise Zone Manager and is for the period ending in December 31, 2020. I think that's supposed to be 2022. Enclosed, you will find recommendations made by the Tax Incentive Review Council as required by the Ohio Revise Code, Section 5709.85. Legislative authority that receives from a tax incentive review council written recommendations shall within 60 days after receipt hold a meeting and vote to accept, reject, or modify all or any portion of the recommendations. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact the Enterprise Zone Manager for your jurisdiction or me. Sincerely, Robin Sheets. Okay, and the next letter is from Captain Walker, Bussaras Police Department. Mr. Mayor and Honorable Bussaras City Council, on behalf of the dedicated men and women of the Bussaras Police Auxiliary, I send greetings and salutations. As the administration liaison officers to Bussaras Police Auxiliary, I noted ongoing issues in the areas of recruitment and retention. Currently, the staffing for our auxiliary unit has fallen to the lowest in my 25-year career. Due to...
Waiting.
Oh, sorry, yeah. Due to wanting personal numbers, we are struggling to meet longstanding commitments held with local businesses and the Bussaras City School District. In a creative effort to expand our recruitment areas, we respectfully request Bussaras City Ordinance 133.07(c) be reviewed and amended to include adjoining counties. We currently have three applications in review for Richland and Marion Counties. However, we're unable to proceed with approval due to the specific language of the above-mentioned ordinance. I thank you in advance for your time and consideration of our request. If you have any questions, please reach out to me via phone or email, twalker@sbussarasahh.us. Professionally, Captain Walker. The next letter is from City Council to Mayor Reeser, Safety Service Director Wagner, and Law Director Gerner. And the mayor state of the city, report March 2, Mayor Reeser entertained the fact that the city revenues could fall short in the next few years and suggested reinstituting a portion of the out-of-town worker income tax credit. This credit was given to residents in 2013 in an effort to pass the safety services levy. It would be wrong to ask for it back now, as that was never the intention. In an effort to forego any revenue shortfall for the city or interruption of services for the citizens of Bussaras, we, the undersigned, respectfully request the Bussaras City Administration, along with the law director, abide by the city's annexation policy and begin annexation procedures on properties that meet the requirements. The mayor has been supplied with a list of properties that may meet these requirements. BCO, Bussaras Certified Ordinance, Chapter 951 clearly states that abutting or contiguous properties outside of the corporation limits receiving city-owned utilities other than water shall require annexation. We feel that this is our duty as elected representatives of the city of Bussaras, Ohio. And then we have one that wasn't on the agenda. This was given to me from Kelly. It's a memorandum from CBussaras, oh, I'm sorry, from Norton Bicentennial, Inc. Please plan on attending an announcement event Monday, July 25 at 10:30 a.m. at the Old Ice Plant, 520 North Stusky Avenue. State Senator Bill Radkey and State Representative Reordon McLean will be announcing two grants awarded to Norton Bicentennial, Inc. That will allow us to demolish the ice plant and begin construction of Norton Bicentennial Park. Again, please join us to hear this exciting news.
Okay. Back to the letter from Captain Walker. Does that need to be referred to committee?
Yes, I'll move to refer that, I believe, to health and safety.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Standing committee reports. Plating.
Just waiting for the hearing, which is August 1st at 6:00 p.m.
Public lands and buildings? Health and safety?
No report.
Finance?
No report.
Economic development?
No report.
Service?
No report.
Traffic commission?
No report, but we do have a traffic commission meeting tentatively scheduled for next Tuesday, July 26 at 10:30 a.m. in council chambers. We're still waiting to hear back from, talk to people if they can make it, and we will make the announcements as soon as we hear. But it's tentative right now. We'll follow up with everything.
All right. Thank you. Motion to accept what was provided?
So move.
Second. Who was first?
McKeever. Or Myers? No, it was Wireball.
I have a first by Mr. Wireball, a second by Ms. Sherrick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Report of city officials. Mr. Reeser?
Nothing special really to report. Got a couple notes that you have. Just remember National Night Out is coming up, and it's not too late to register to host a neighborhood gathering. Call the BPD number that you would.
Thank you. And safety service director report?
I've got a few things from Jeff's report. Probably, assuming you may have already been on the off-white path. Little patchwork to do in the parking lot, and we'll be back to complete that. Mill and pave is finishing up the first half of the paving next week. It's a little slower this time because they did have a equipment breakdown at Bussaras Road Materials, so. Woodlawn, the OPWC water line is going on right now. We'll be finishing up. The Arcadis was here about a week ago, came to visit to the wastewater plant and to continue to analyze what's going on there and possible solutions about where we're heading. OD and our reservoir updates. We have our engineering firm working on plans for the NEF reservoir and trying to do it as cost-effective as possible. And city-owned properties that we're selling will be out to bid, and those bids will be accepted until 9:59 on Monday, August 15. And for more details, see the city website or call our office. ODOT has hired a company to do traffic counts. Maybe you've noticed some of those on the streets. Communication director, we are accepting applications for this position. You may get an application on the city website or in our office. The bridge is now open on Poplar Street, and just a few little asphalt patches that have to be finished up. And we opened the bids today for the water treatment plant HVAC system, and we'll be sending that to the engineer for their recommendation. If that, once we receive that, then we will award the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Schiffer? I'm sorry, I apologize. I jumped right over you. Mr. Gerner?
No worries. Nothing to report. We do have a couple items to discuss in the executive session later.
Okay. Ms. Schiffer?
Yes, ma'am. You will notice that I gave you all a very colorful look this evening. It's our annual report. Our audit is completed. There were no findings. Everything was found to be in order with our federal monies we received and all our grants, so I'm pleased to report that. If you have insomnia, guaranteed to put you to sleep, but there is a lot of really good information in here, so I would suggest you at least browse through it. I do have some referrals. In addition to the items I previously referred to the finance committee, which I will address on Thursday, we will need to create two new funds with the necessary appropriations. One is for the opioid settlement that we received in our bank account on Friday. That's through the Attorney General's Office, and it can only be used for certain things, so we have to create a fund for that. And I guess we're going to receive this money every year for multiple years. It's, one year's stipend is not very much to do things with. It can only be used for programs to help with addiction and recovery, and we received $4,037. So we may be building that fund for a little while, but if there's something we can use it for, we certainly will put it to good use. Another thing I wanted to go through just a little bit, because council probably doesn't understand it or doesn't know. We've been asking for an increase in the solid waste rates. That's partly because of the increases in landfill costs, which we really have no control over, and I know we're as upset about it as anyone else. And I know there were some comments made about we need to tighten our belts first, and we asked, I think, two and a half years ago about doing something, and council didn't feel they wanted to do it at that time, so what we did instead was we changed the bill for the solid waste employees. We have seven employees whose home department is solid waste, but only three of those employees are paid 100% from solid waste. Then we have two equipment operator drivers and floaters who are paid 45% from solid waste, 28% from streets, and 27% from sewers and drains, because they do work for those departments, too. We also have two skilled laborers that are only paid 20% out of solid waste, 40% streets, and 40% sewers and drains. and 40% sewers and drains. The whole reason this was done was to save the solid waste fund, since we didn't have an increase, and we had to spread it out as best we could to meet the needs of all the departments. The other thing that happened at that time, we reduced the amount for our solid waste replacement fund from $1 to 50 cents, with the 50 cents going to the solid waste fund to keep it solvent. And that's now coming back to bite us. We did buy a new truck last year, but when we have to replace it, this 50 cents per month is not going to feed this fund enough to be able to replace the next one. I was thinking there was one other thing I wanted to bring up on this, and it just left me. But we will discuss this more on Thursday night, and I will have the breakdown for all the lines we need to adjust for gas and oil. Also, one of the items for the gas and oil was in solid waste. We need $15,000 more, we're projecting, to get us through the rest of the year with these high gas prices. And there's, looking at the budget, there's only $7,000 I can appropriate. There isn't enough left to even cover that $15,000. So I just wanted everyone to be aware of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Can I have a motion to refer these items to finance?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Ms. Sherrick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You have the treasures report in front of you. I have a motion to accept and file.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a motion by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. You have the, we don't have anything from the police.
Oh, farther.
Nothing from Chief Ox.
Oh, nothing, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Do you have Chief Schwimley's report? I have a motion to accept and file.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Spiegel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I guess I didn't have to do those separately. Sorry. Motion to accept the remaining city official reports.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Potter, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Visitors input regarding the reports outstanding in special committees and reports of city officials? Seeing none, moving on. Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Proposed ordinance number 26-2022, amending the traffic control map and file established by ordinance 2778 in sections 305.01, 305.02, and 305.03 of the codified ordinance of the state of Busaras, Ohio, and adding additional signage, all as detailed herein. Proposed resolution number 227-2022, appointing Colton Young to the position of Busaras Public Library Board trustee to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Hannah Jacobs. Said appointment being for the remainder of her unexpired term ending December 31st, 2022, and declaring an emergency. Proposed resolution number 228-2022, a resolution to adopt the solid waste management plan, update for the Crawford County Solid Waste Management District, and declare an emergency.
That's just the first reading.
Yep.
Question?
Yes.
227-2022, second line, the word vacancy? Is that my imagination, or is it?
Just missing a c.
It's missing a c. Vacancy in the second line. 227.
Okay.
You see any other typos?
That was just the first line of the document. Sorry.
No, you're all right. All right, that won't have to be as amended. Correct?
That'd be a Scrivener's error.
I'm sorry?
That would just be a Scrivener's error.
All right. I need a motion to accept the previous read captions for first reading.
So moved. Second.
I have a first by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Wireball. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any public participation for the legislation that was read for the first time? Seeing none. Consideration of proposed legislation for the second time.
Proposed ordinance number 27-2022, amending and supplementing section 1157.02 entitled Official Zoning District Map under chapter 1157 entitled Zoning Districts and Zoning District Map, under title 9 entitled Zoning Districts, and under part 11 entitled Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the State of Busaras by the redesignation of the property located at Red Oak Court, being the southern part of the Crawford County Parcel Identification Number 44001388100, from the Apartment Residential District and to the Residential Estate District, and also the area of 510 North Sandusky, being Crawford County Parcel Identification Number 080018900001, 080018898000, and 080018899001, from the General Business District and to the Downtown Business District.
All right. You have a motion to accept this as a second reading of that legislation.
So moved. Second.
I have a first by Mr. Spiegel, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any member of the general public wishing to discuss legislation read for the second
Vicky Deschawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, Busaras, ordinance 27-2022. In listening to the June 23rd, 2022, Plating Committee audio recording, it states that there were to be three separate pieces of legislation for the three properties to be addressed at the August 1st, 2022, public hearing. Well, ordinance 27-2022 refers to two properties, that being the Red Oak Court area and 510 North Sandusky Avenue. There has been no legislation prepared for 1050 South Sandusky. Those three areas which were asked were those three areas that are going to be, there's going to be a public hearing for them. Now, it's my understanding when you have a public hearing, you have draft legislation prepared, and it's filed with the zoning office. Now, I did go, last council meeting, questioned John, Mr. Rostache, about posting, because I did not see anything on the window. And this is just something that has always been done, you know, in the past, and I know there's been some that say, well, you know, just because it was done that way before doesn't mean it needs to be done that way now, and that's fine. I questioned him. He said, you know, it's his understanding, he just has to have it in his office for review. However, tonight, I did notice, he has posted on the window three separate pieces of legislation, one for Red Oak Court, one for 510 North Sandusky, and one for 1050 South Sandusky. So I'm a little confused here. He's posting on the window three separate pieces of legislation. You've read one piece of legislation that refers to two properties. You've not read a piece of legislation that refers to the third property. And I did question Mr. Rostache where he received those three pieces of legislation, separate pieces. If I understood him correctly, he believed it was from the law director's office. I asked him if those pieces, when he posted them, he said he believed it was after I had asked him at the last council meeting, you know, why they weren't posted. He went ahead and did that the next day. He does believe, however, that he was, provided those three separate pieces, 30 days in advance of the public hearing.
Okay.
The public hearing notice that we have on our event calendar, under Documents on Demand, does not include the 1050 South Sandusky Avenue. It only includes 510 North Sandusky and the Red Oak Court. Now, I will say that the public hearing notice, which is on the city's zoning department website, does include all three properties. I think we have a problem here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and I will add that the public hearing notice was published twice in the telegraph form, and it did include all three properties.
Okay. Well, this is going to have to be bounced back to your officer.
Yeah, I'll look at it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, referred back to originating committee. Proposed ordinance 26-2022, referred back to health and safety. Proposed ordinance 27-2022. What are they do? You want me to send it back to plating, or you want to wait?
Yeah.
Yeah, what?
Send it back to plating.
Okay.
No questions.
Okay. Needs referred back to plating. Proposed resolution 227-2022, referred back to economic development, and proposed resolution 228-2022, referred back to service. Committee report on pending legislation.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
I need to verify something about the service piece about the solid waste management plan. If we could take a two and a half minute recess.
Absolutely. We're in recess at 7:42. We're back in session at 7:47. All right. Committee reports on pending legislation. Proposed ordinance 26-2022, health and safety.
Health and safety is favorable to proposed ordinance 26-2022, the traffic commission amendments and signage which was amended.
Thank you. Proposed ordinance 27-2022, plating.
Plating is favorable to ordinance, proposed ordinance 27-2022, the Downtown Business District, Apartment District, and we will get the other information for the public hearing.
Proposed resolution 227-2022, economic development.
Economic development is favorable of proposed resolution 227-2022, the appointment of the library trustee, Colton Young.
And proposed resolution 28, I'm sorry, 228-2022, service.
Service committee is in favor of proposed resolution 228-2022, solid waste update.
Thank you. Further consideration of pending legislation. Resolution number 227-2022, for the second and third readings of proposed resolution 227-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
First, was I right? McKeever or Wireball?
McKeever. Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 227-2022?
So moved. Second.
I have a first by Spiegel and a second by Young.
Okay. Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 228-2022?
So moved. Second.
I have a first by Spiegel, a second by McKeever.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 228-2022?
So moved. Second.
I have a first by Spiegel, a second by McKeever.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Resolution 228-2022 is duly adopted. Do we have any old and unfinished business? Seeing none. Do we have any new and miscellaneous business? Do we have a perplexed look, sir?
No, I'm waiting for referrals, because I asked for the referral on the list.
Oh, okay. We have no absent members? So now referrals?
Yeah, I wanted to refer the issue of tree lawns and tree maintenance and tree responsibilities, and I don't know for sure where that goes. I'm thinking service.
Health and safety would probably be appropriate also.
Service and health and safety?
Both?
And public lands and buildings.
And public lands and buildings.
All right, so we got public lands and buildings, service.
So finance.
And health and safety.
Who's going to pay for it?
Do we need finance?
No, it's got a line item on the budget already for fees.
Okay, all right. All right. May I have a motion to refer this to public lands and building service and health and safety?
So moved. I made that motion already.
Oh, second, I mean. Right, you did. I'm already on your vacation.
Thanks.
I have a first by Myers, a second by Ms. Sherrick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have the referral of the ordinance 133.07(c) to health and safety. We've got the two new funds to finance. Are there any other referrals that we need to make? I would entertain a motion. I need to know a reason. Do I?
Yes, you need a motion to have, go into executive session to discuss pending or imminent court action.
All right. May I have a motion to go into executive session for pending and/or imminent court action?
So moved.
Second.
And then you have to have a, sorry, roll call.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, roll call.
Okay.
I'm not hearing anything.
Roll call vote.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, and a second by Ms. Sherrick. Roll call vote, please.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
We are in executive session at 7:54.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Roll call vote, please.
Right, roll call vote. Sorry, apologize.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
All right, we are out of executive session at 8:07 p.m.
So I have prepared a resolution adopting the settlement or the judgment entry on the Deschawn matter. If you make, someone makes a motion to suspend the rules, specifically the rule that specifically the rule that it has to come out of a committee, and then we'll, we can proceed with it tonight. And then further, you could suspend the rule about three readings and then pass it tonight. Or not pass it, but, um, upon the proper motion, we could suspend the rules and proceed with that piece of legislation tonight.
So do I have a motion to suspend the rules for requiring legislation to go to committee? So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr., I'm sorry, a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. McKeever. Roll call vote, please.
Sherrick?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
All right, consideration of legislation read for the first time. Resolution number 229-2022, authorizing and directing the Bussaras City Auditor to draw a warrant or warrants in payment to Vicki Lynn Deschawn of judgment in Crawford County Cora Common, please case number 227, 22CB0003, in the amount of $2,500 plus cost in the amount of $300 and statutory interest from July 12th, 2022, from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations and declaring an emergency. So moved. Thank you.
We need a motion to accept that as a first reading.
Yeah, that's a motion to accept as a first reading.
Yep.
Thank you. I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. McKeever. Roll call vote, please.
You said Sherrick and McKeever?
Yes.
Sherrick? McKe, sorry, McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
For the second and third readings of proposed resolution 229-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a first by Mr. Wireball.